Story for last week.
That was a good story.
Yeah.
That would have been good for the young man who's going into the ring where we had in last week.
He's sworn in, but he wouldn't have made a different decision, maybe.
He just hoped that, uh, that body of water clearer is thorough at his job, I guess, right?
It's been forty years. Maybe it's a little different now.
Our guests in this segment from the Berkeley County Commission, President of that Commission, Eddie Gokenhour. Eddie, good morning to you.
Good morning, Rob.
And the Vice President, Steve Catlett.
Morning, Rob, Bill, John.
Morning, Steve.
Hi, Eddie.
Yeah, like that opening scene from Airplane, Captain McCloskey. So, uh, first and foremost, I know that we have a final agreement on the impact fees, and that was covered in our newscast by Dylan Bishop. If you want to run those down. Eddie, I know you have in the past, uh, detailed where those are going to go, but it's now actually official, and you have an official start date for it, too.
We do. Uh, it'll be sixty days after, uh, this past Thursday. And, uh, there is a forty-five day period where, uh, a petition, uh, could be presented to stop it. But, uh, hopefully that doesn't happen, and we'll be able to move forward. And, uh, you know, there's all, there's all types of, uh, improvements, uh, that, that we'll be able to make off of these, between Parks and Rec, um, Fire Police EMS, school system. So, um, I'm pretty excited about it. I mean, this is a long time coming. The, the public has been asking, uh, for this for quite a while. Another section I did not mention was the administrative portion for the county government, which, you know, we're looking at improving, renovating, totally renovating the Crawford Building for our Judicial Center. Uh, so there's, you know, all these, all these opportunities that we've been able to help create, uh, is an opportunity for growth, uh, to hopefully take care of growth, and that we don't have to turn back to the taxpayer to say, hey, we need to raise your, your tax rate because of this, this or that. So hopefully some of these things will offset that, that, that tax burden. That's what, that's the goal.
Do you have the detailed numbers with you, Eddie?
Well, yeah, I mean, we do. Uh, it, it, it doesn't really, they're not, they're not exact. These, I mean, the impact fee number is, which is fifty-five hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, if you remember, Tishler and Bice suggested, uh, Steve, what was it? Eleven thousand, six seventy or seven sixty?
Yeah, eleven, eleven, seven something.
Yeah. Uh, and, you know, you know, we chose to, we chose to, to start out at fifty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, we, we feel that's a, a fair number that, to get started with. And this can be adjusted annually, up or down.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, we'll see how, how it goes.
All right. Let me ask this. Does this count for places that are, like, I live in the gallery, and the bottom half of the gallery right now that they hadn't built when, when everything stopped in like oh-seven, oh-eight, they hadn't built it.
Is that city of Martinsburg?
It's city. It's in city limits. But now it looks like they're going to be a thousand houses, townhouses in the bottom half. They're already, they're already grading it. They're already doing all that stuff. Are projects that are underway, or like the big project out in Hedgesville, are projects that are underway, are they gonna have impact fees, or are they exempted because they've already been started?
Okay, uh, our impact fee is not going to impact the city of Martinsburg.
Okay. But I'm saying, but like, out in Hedgesville.
But out in Hedgesville.
But if it's, if somebody's already started a development, they've broken ground, they, they've, they've got the, you know, the little bathroom thing sticking up out of the ground. Will they have to pay since those houses have not been built, or are those exempted because it was already started?
Okay, the impact fee comes about when they apply for the building permit. So if they've alr-, if they've already applied for the building permit, which is good for six months, then, then they will be exempt from that.
Okay.
But if they've not yet started the structure, have not started their permit process, then yes, they will be subject to the fifty-five hundred.
Thank you.
So the, uh, you, you had mentioned, um, about a sixty-day implementation before it starts. It's gonna be a huge influx of, of people applying right now to try to get it in before that sixty-day mark.
It could be.
Are you, you have plans?
The timing's good, uh, because it's going into the fall, winter season.
Oh, oh, absolutely.
So, as far as.
Timing's good, but how are you all going to, your staff to be able to handle that huge amount of people that's gonna be applying to try to get, get in before, so they can save that fifty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, people go in the grocery store, pack the place for one free item, uh, much less to be able to go in for, uh, you know, save fifty-five hundred dollars. How are you planning on being able to handle that huge amount?
Yeah, uh, you know, Gary and Chad will work through those details with those department heads and make sure that they're staffed and that, uh, there's no backlog. Uh, you know, we've, we kind of pride ourselves that typically with, with between twelve and fifteen days, you will have your building permit, um, providing there's not a tremendous amount of changes or, uh, corrections that need to be made on your plan. But, uh, but those, those are details that, that staff will take care of. You know, that's, so.
Eddie, you mentioned that the city of Martinsburg was exempt from the impact fees. Explain how that came about, as the city is part of the county, but it has its own separate government, too.
They are. Uh, and, and truthfully, construction in the city does have an impact in the county, uh, especially with, with Parks and Rec, uh, with schools, you know. But we did not want to, uh, impose a, an additional fee in the city of Martinsburg. So they're exempt. They're exempt, uh, as, as we know it today. Let's do it that way.
Was that always the plan, or did that come about later in the process with negotiation?
It was always in my thought process, uh, to not do that. Uh, I think there may be some dis-, some different opinions of whether they should be, uh, imposed. But the other problem with that is the ability then to collect that fee. So, okay, so if we did it and the, and the city collected it, then how do they get it to where it needs to go? So I, I, I think that.
They could use the US mail. They could just send a check or.
Yeah.
Drop it off. I don't know.
He's just being funny, Eddie.
I am, Eddie, I'm just being funny. No, I know how hard it is for one, one jurisdiction to pay another.
Eddie takes this stuff seriously.
I do. I, I, I'm not a funny guy, all right? I apologize.
You're in a serious line of work.
I have been all my life.
All your life, and thank you very much for your line of work.
Hey, 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 hey. It's, it's been, it was my privilege. It truly was to serve, uh, in that capacity. But, but no, uh.
It was a pretty funny line, though.
It was. I gotta stop a second. But, but no, we, we did not want to impose, uh, an additional fee on city residents. Uh, we just, we just didn't want to do that. You know, it's just like the one cent percent, uh, percent sales tax that we had talked about originally. We did not want to add an extra penny to the, the residents of the city. So that's why we said, nope, it, it, it's separate, you know. So we tried to keep this separate as well. I mean, we have a, we have a wonderful relationship, uh, right now with the city, and we've worked hard to do that, you know. So to kind of hit them broadside with this, I, I think, you know, would, would cause issues, so.
There's sixty days before the impact fees kick in. Is that mandated by the code for these? Is that why it has to be sixty days?
Yes.
Yeah. When you also, there, there's not, there's also not as much room for growth in the city. I mean, there's only so much land within city limits.
Except, except out where you're living.
Except where I'm living in the gallery where, you know, they're, they're closing the road. But that's, but they've already, they're already under permit. But, I mean, as far as the city, I mean, I'm just thinking in my head, there are not big developments that are gonna be going in like there are in the county.
Everything east of eighty-one is pretty well developed, yeah.
Yes, without a doubt.
Yeah. So in regards to the fees, Eddie, you said that they are not exact as to who, what, what department gets what amount of money?
Well, they are.
Yeah.
They, they are. Uh, and Steve probably has this memorized, but I, I, I had bought in just a, the, uh, uh, capital improvement plan, which spares out different, uh, projects that are, were earmarked, you know, for, for these dollars. But, but Steve's got the numbers, I'm sure.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Well, the county administration is just a little over a thousand dollars a house, okay? Like thousand twenty or something.
And, and a lot of that money will go to be renovating the Crawford Building?
It will. And, uh, it's a wonderful thing. And, and I had people say to me this, and said, well, how is that gonna help the people in Berkeley County? Uh, I don't ever use the court system or go into, you know. Well, good for you that you haven't, but the truth is, if we didn't have this funding to do this project, we're talking twenty million dollars at about a one-point-six-million-dollar-a-year revenue bond payment that we don't, that we now have a source of funding to use to pay it. And so that frees up one-point-six-million dollars for all the things that do affect you, so, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, Parks and Rec's at one-point-seven, uh, oh, a thousand, a thousand-seven-hundred, seventeen-hundred a house. Uh, Sheriff's Department was low. It was like three-seventy-two, but that was max.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, Fire and Rescue was at fourteen-hundred, and we got it down to thirteen-hundred. And the school system qualified for seven-something, and we, we got them a little over a thousand dollars, like a thousand thirty-nine dollars a house, so.
And that makes up the fifty-five hundred.
But, but the good news is this, and as, uh, we're, we're starting out, we think, uh, you know, moderate. And we can change it every year and tweak it every year if we have to. We can tweak this capital improvements plan every year if we have to. So that's the beauty of this whole thing. And, um, it's been a long time coming. Like Eddie said, we've worked on this for a year and a half, two years now. And so to finally see it come to fruition, and, uh, by October first, we should be ready to roll. And truthfully, I, I don't think the overwhelming impact on, uh, everybody rushing in is gonna be as, as, as large as everybody thinks it's gonna be. I don't, I don't think that's, you know, most of the new housing is done by big, huge developers and all, and stuff. And so, you know, they, uh, we'll, we'll be fine. I mean.
And I, I think the opinion, and, and absolutely right, um, Stephen, talking about needing the court system, needing to develop the Crawford Building, it's gonna come with a hefty price tag. And I think the opinion of the majority of the people in the county is, you know, you gotta have that money come from somewhere. So I think people are gonna be more, um, for, you know, people moving into our area that's overcrowding things to them, for that group to have to bear the burden of paying some additional monies for the court system versus the ones that have lived here all their lives. They're not going anywhere. They don't want to have to pay this by way of ta-, increase in other taxes. They would much rather see the people that are moving into our area to pay that burden, or, or a portion of that burden. And, and we talked before going on the air, you know, an average cost of a house being three-hundred-fifty to four-hundred-thousand dollars, five thousand dollars isn't that huge of an amount. It's a smaller percentage versus if you were, um, making a little venture and only spending maybe a hundred-fifty, two-hundred-thousand dollars, but that doesn't happen very much in our area.
And you talk about the Judicial Center, you know, we still have debt on, on our new Judicial Center, uh, which won't be, uh, cleared up and paid off until twenty-nine. So we get one more magistrate, one more judge because of our growth. Uh, that's, that's, that's the way the state has got us set up now, uh, according to growth, finally. And, uh, so if we get one more, uh, judicial person, we're out of space. So truthfully, I mean, we just, we just renovated the, the old jail to get a judge in there. Uh, and it's, it's like, there's no more room. There is no more room. And we, we do not have the funds to, to renovate this building until after twenty-nine. So this will give us, I think, a little bit of a jumpstart on that. Uh, and, and, and truthfully, put us financially, you know, you know, strong, so.
So if we did not have these impact fees, where would those dollars go? Because obviously, you're still gonna have to have a, the Judicial Center, um, finished paying off. You're still gonna have to have the Crawford Building renovated. Because if you look at the dockets for the judges, you can see how full they are. They're not getting any less. You're gonna have to have more judges. Where would those dollars have come from if we did not implement the impact fees?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Tell you the truth, uh, Bill, uh, I, I, I just, I don't know. The only option would be to raise the property taxes, okay? That's the only option we have.
Because that's the only way you get tax relief.
That's it. So, and that's what we're trying not to do for the people of this community, so. We wanna maintain the quality of life in this community, improve it if possible, and not do it at the expense of the property owners. And we've worked really hard to do that. And, uh, we're gonna continue to do that as long as we're here working. And, um, but it's really important that we find sources of revenue other than in property taxes to keep the quality of life in Berkeley County at a high level, and we need to do that. It's, it, 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 shame on us if we don't. That's all I have to say.
Well, and, and you know, all of us have, have concerns on our senior citizens. And the home state exemption that they get in this county is very minimal compared to the rest of the state. And we have, we have tried to, uh, change those numbers, and we will continue to work on changing those numbers, uh, to get those dollars, uh, that, that they can deduct off their taxes higher for them, to help them. So, you know, I, I just think about the, the widow or the widower that's now down to one income in their house. You know, they don't want to sell their house because that's where they've lived all their lives. And truthfully, that's where their nest egg is, but that's still home. And they, we, we have to be cognizant that we don't push them out of their homes. And, and, you know, we think about stuff like that, and, you know, people may not realize it or appreciate it, but those are conversations that we have. So if we can do other things, you know, it's just like the TIF funds. The TIF funds that we've created, well, I think will help create additional, um, economic opportunity to expand the tax base, create jobs, so that we don't have to live, raise the levy rate, so that we can help with the water and sewer, uh, infrastructure that goes to those areas, so that we don't have to raise the water and sewer rate. So those are the things, the, the fire station, uh, EMS building, the public safety building that will go build on the north end, you know, the ambulance authority, nor the Fire Board, nor the county has got to raise one cent of a tax to pay for that building because it's gonna be paid for, paid for through TIF funds. So those are the things that we're looking at to try to be able to do in this county.
I wanna get to that in a minute, uh, maybe in the back half of this half hour. Eddie, I wanna talk about some of the projects you have on that, uh.
Capital improvements.
Stack of paper right there, your capital improvements, because that's pretty much the only way you can use these impact fee funds. You can't use them for operational expenses.
Can't use it for salaries, benefits, operational and all. It has to be capital development or new equipment. That's, that's needed because of new growth.
And additional.
That's a very important part of it, too.
An additional ambulance, for instance?
For instance, uh, our ambulance authority, if they need new ambulance to replace existing ambulances, it doesn't qualify.
Right.
It only has to be, we, we need a new ambulance because we now need a new crew because of the growth that's created, that need, so.
For instance, in North Side Station, you would need the fire trucks and ambulances.
Same with fire trucks and all, so.
So if you had to hire new, uh, sheriff deputies, you couldn't use this, the, the impact fees to pay for the salaries for those deputies, but you could use it to, uh, to provide the equipment such as cruisers?
Purchase their vehicle, which is the biggest, largest expense of that, and then their uniforms or guns and all.
So you could use the funds to pay for those parts.
Because, I mean, the, the impact fees, and I've been, I've been a strong proponent of impact fees for years, but before our hands were tied with the state, because you had, uh, you had to have zoning to have impact fees. Can you guys just talk a little bit about that law change at the state level? Just very, very little, Eddie.
Well, it's, it's gonna take very little.
We're never gonna get it passed, right?
Yeah. Well, it passed.
It, it did.
Right.
And ninety-nine, thirty-four to zero in the Senate and ninety-nine to one in the House.
Exactly.
And it took striking one sentence out of the entire law. That's all we did. We had, we had our, uh, our lobbyist, uh, work with the legislature and remove one sentence out of this entire law to allow us to impose the impact fees and have growth pay for growth.
That's great. I mean.
We qualified everywhere else in the law. We qualified, except for the zoning. And so we had struck one simple sentence is what.
And it's too bad they couldn't have done that twenty years ago, and it's good, I guess, your lobbyists did a heck of a good job.
Think of all the billion dollars over the last twenty years.
Oh, my gosh. I mean, I'm, I, that was going through my head.
They didn't have the courage to do it. We, we tried, and, and they did not have the courage to do it, so.
I have a question for you guys while you're here from Cindy Lehman Stegmyer. If I have existing property that I live on and want to build a pole building on it, would I be hit with an impact fee?
No, ma'am. No. No addition to your homes, existing homes, uh, if your house burns down, you have to replace it? No, no impact fee on that. Uh, only a new structure, new home that people are gonna live in, new structure.
A new house?
No additions, no anything.
If you buy an, if your, your kid grows up in the area and buys a house that already exists, they do not get hit with an impact fee?
That's correct.
But if you have a piece of land.
And you subdivide it.
And you subdivide it, you're gonna pay an impact fee, which you should, because it's creating an impact.
If you buy an existing home, like Rob said, you don't pay an impact fee, no.
Right. On your list, Steve, some of the capital projects, did you want to detail some of those?
Sure. Uh, well, we talked about Fire and Rescue and Law Enforcement already.
Hang on. No, nobody didn't quite.
Okay.
So, so the, the fee that, that we're looking at, some of the capital improvements that we'd be able to make, uh, I, I'm kind of excited about, like, like Station Forty-Nine on Middle Lake Parkway. They wanna, they wanna take that substation, put an addition on it to allow for twenty-four-hour crews. So right out the gate, we wanna get a twenty-four-hour ambulance crew in that facility. So we're, we're, we're making improvements there. Same way on Mountain Lake Road. We, we, we need to be able to improve that building to allow for staffing, so there's another opportunity. So those, those are the really wonderful things that I see. Steve?
And, uh, county administration, we talked about the, the main need there is gonna be towards the, uh, new, uh, renovation of the Crawford Building for the Judicial Center. So it leaves Parks and Rec, and Parks and Rec's gonna qualify, uh, for funding to use at the new Inwood Park. If there's a, right now, we're gonna break ground any day now. We signed the contract with Lance out of Winchester to start the park. Should be breaking ground any day now. People are so excited about it. We've got over six million dollars. Over half of it's been grants and funding sources that won't cost the taxpayers anything, and we're just thrilled about it. Uh, but other needs in the future, uh, it's not the complete park, but it's, we're gonna probably get sixty, seventy percent of it done with the money we have now, and, um, will qualify. Uh, DuPont soccer, for instance, uh, it'll qualify to maybe put turf on those fields and light those fields down there. Uh, how you say, well, how does that affect new growth? Well, if, instead of building a whole new field, if you put lights on it, now you get double the use out of those fields. And so it handles the new growth, and, uh, not only for our local kids, but also for bringing people in from out of state to.
Turnments.
Turnments and things like that. So, uh, uh, also, a, a biggie for Parks and Rec is purchase of land. And I'm not talking about building parks tomorrow or in the next couple of years, but I'm talking about for the future. And shame on us. Uh, we're at about four hundred acres right now in our park system. We should be about twelve hundred acres based on our, our current population. And we've got to set aside some acreage for fifteen, twenty years from now, when all the land's used up and it's growing up and it's built with helms on it. We now have some acreage set aside for some park space.
Well, and at some point, we're gonna need a, uh, a facility on the north end of the county, similar to the two thousand and the Randy Smith.
Exactly.
Well, indoor facility. The, the north and the northwest, you know, that, the Hedgesville section is growing as well, and we want to be, whatever we do, we wanna be able to accommodate, really, the growing part, and, and the west side is.
Hang on, Eddie. We'll get to, uh, more of that with Eddie Gokenhour and Steve Catlett from the Berkeley County Commission after we return from these. And returning from the first half hour, the President of the Berkeley County Commission, Eddie Gokenhour.
Good to be back.
Vice President Steve Catlett.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome, Steve.
I'm just, I'm, I'm proud to be sitting here with two, uh, amazing men who've done so much for our county and in our county, and continue to. I mean, between your years of fire service and everything, and the way you built Parks and Rec, our county would not be what it is without the service of the last thirty, forty years by both of you. Thank you.
I tell you, like, it, it's truly, I wanna give Steve time to talk to, but it's, it's truly been my privilege to serve this community. And many, many years ago, I went to Fairfax, a friend of mine, and I, I, we weren't making much at all, at all in the city, and I was working like eighty, ninety hours a week, trying, just trying to make a living. And I'm like, dang, go on. And a friend of mine who worked there says, look, he said, we're hiring. He said, I know you can get a job. He said, come down here. So he took me on a tour that day, and we stopped, and we grabbed a sandwich. He probably bought, because I probably didn't, couldn't afford to do it, but, uh, I'm like, you, you know what? I appreciate you taking me down here, but I truly, I have not seen one person that I really care about. I said, I'm going back home. I'm gonna figure it out, and that's where I'm gonna work, and that's where I'm gonna stay. And this, this is a wonderful place. It's a wonderful place to raise a family and to work and live and, and to serve the people that you live around and among, and take care of your friends and family. It's, it's wonderful.
Steve, your testimonial?
Oh, I, I, I loved my job for forty-five years at Parks and Rec, and everything you did was for the benefit of someone else. And, uh, you can't say enough about that, you know? I mean, when you, when you love going to work, it's like a passion, and that's what it was. And, um, I just wanna see the park system continue to grow, but I wanna see Berkeley County, as it grows, protect this quality of life, because I said many a time in the fifties and sixties, when I grew up in Hedgesville, West Virginia, in downtown Hedgesville, there wasn't a better place in the United States of America to grow up at that age, and it was just an awesome life.
Potato Hill, right?
Well, that close, yeah. Well, my mom moved to Potato Hill, and my, my, my dad was raised there, but, um, but yeah. I, I pulled many weeds in the garden on Potato Hill over my lifetime, but, uh, but we, we, you know, so, you know, the first year I retired, I was so friggin' bored. I was losing my mind, literally losing my mind. And thank goodness I got elected to this office, because now I can continue to work on the quality of life for Berkeley County in a different, on the other side of the podium now, but I love it, you know? Is, is it frustrating? Absolutely. And things take so long to get done? But I love every minute of what we're doing right now. And, and believe me, there's a lot of, you know, the fiber optics going through Back Creek Valley right now, it's a fabulous thing that's going on back there.
You hear that, Brad? No.
The new park, the new park, uh, up at Inwood is a fabulous thing that's going on. And we got some other things in the hopper that we can't talk about today, but, well, you know, this impact fee's gonna really help. It's gonna really help us.
Bill Kearns.
Yeah, and, and, and growing up, you know, unless you traveled to Martinsburg, the only place you had to really go eat would be Gracie's in, in, in Hedgesville.
I learned, I learned the facts of life on Gracie's front porch.
Not necessarily the TV show either.
That's where everyone hung out in the evenings, you know, and that's where you learned it all.
Yeah, that's not good for this show, though.
You, you have the first question, Mr. Kearns.
Yeah, um, so asked the questions, or we talked in the beginning about the impact fees and, and how to, how it refers to, uh, single-family dwellings and building those. But question I have, um, is how are these impact fees gonna affect commercial establishments? Because clearly our area is booming with, um, places being built. Some later on are not able to make it, and they become vacant buildings, which we have a lot of those. But how are these impact fees gonna affect commercial businesses?
There we go. We, we really struggled with this part of it. And, uh, the, uh, fee structure that was given to us by Tishler Bice, uh, we weren't happy with it, to be honest with you. We thought it was way too high, and we beat it around and talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. And because of the fact that we can tweak it every year and make changes, we decided this first year not to charge any impact at all on non, non-residential and the commercial side. And until we study it more, understand it more, and, uh, we wanna be fair. Uh, the commercial growth to take care of the population growth is, in for, in terms of taxation, is, is your better growth, because it's class three, which is double the rate of a residential properties. And so that's the kind of growth we don't want, uh, to slow down and hurt. And, uh, so we, uh, we're gonna take our time and study that.
But don't you think the community is gonna look at this also as being one of the things like, hey, if you come and build your business in, in Berkeley County, we're gonna defer your taxes? Are you afraid that people are gonna look at it on the same note as that?
So be it. I'm not afraid to answer their questions, but, you know, uh, we're gonna eventually charge something, but we want it to be fair, and we want it to be right. And we weren't in a position at this point to, to implement that, and I feel very comfortable with not doing it this first year.
Well, and, and another thing, uh, portion of that is that the, on the last election, the public voted to increase the commercial fire fee, and it was increased substantially. So that is really and truly one of the main reasons why we did not, uh, want to step forward with the impact fee on commercial, was because of, of the large increase in the fire service fee.
And before that, uh, the ambulance fee, non-residential, or, uh, never existed, and that was put into place the year before that.
Yeah.
So the commercial side is already giving a lot, okay? A lot more than the residential side. And so we think it's fair to, uh, to slowly go into this and, and, and be fair to them.
What was the suggested fee that you all were not in favor of implementing yet? What was the suggested fee for commercial?
Well, it depends on the type of commercial, but it's based on square footage. And, you know, on a, uh, building the size of, say, ten thousand square feet, it could be as much as thirty, forty thousand dollar impact, you know? And for a small business like a restaurant or something, it could be enough that it would cause them to abandon the project and not do it.
Yeah, I can see why you'd wanna hesitate in that situation.
And we have to be competitive. You know, we, we wanna be competitive with our neighbors, you know, uh, you know, up and down the corridor or in particular. So, uh, the Development Authority is always working hard to see, you know, showcase Berkeley County. And, and when they do their due diligence and they start looking at, okay, look at, let's look at the fees and, and the cost of operating in Berkeley County, uh, we didn't want that to be a deterrent because the Development Authority works very hard, uh, in, in trying to locate good businesses here.
We want, and we want businesses. We've had ridiculous residential growth, but we have not had the same kind of growth in businesses. I mean, we've gotten some big ones, but we haven't had a lot of small businesses moving in. And, I mean, that's, that's really the backbone, but it also creates jobs, and it also, especially if it's retail or if it's something like that, I mean, you're creating stuff where people are buying their stuff here and not going to Winchester, not going to Hagerstown. You know, we're collecting the, the tax revenue here instead of our people paying the taxes up there and supporting Maryland schools and Maryland's, the other things in Maryland.
Absolutely. Yeah, they, you know, the opportunity there, John, to establish, expand the tax base and create opportunities for, uh, young folks to, uh, to work here, so they don't have to move from here. And you're, you're right, those businesses that, you know, employ, you know, twenty to, to fifty to a hundred folks, those, those are really great small jobs, uh, here in this county that, that I think can thrive. You know, we've already proven that the P and G's and, you know, the Macy's and the Clorox, they, they're gonna do great here. Uh, but, but like you say, those smaller businesses have truly been the backbone, uh, for, for our community.
Steve, uh, Catlett, Eddie Gokenhour are guests here on the program for Berkeley County Commission. We're gonna switch off of impact fees for a moment now. Take me up to CMC Metals in the north. We're gonna switch off of impact fees for a moment now, and take me up to CMC Metals in the north part of the county. And if, if I don't have the terminology correct, please correct it. But the TIFF districts and whether CMC's in it or out of it, and the impact it has on the county and what you're trying to do, help me out with this one.
Okay. Well, originally, on the north TIFF, the Dupont property was not included in the TIFF district.
And TIFF is tax increment financing?
It is. And the reason that it, it was not included is, quite honestly, I was very intimate in, in the discussion. And, and helping to gather information to, for the commission to be able to decide if they wanted to have impact fees. A friend of mine had approached me, I was very uneducated on the TIFF funds. So I went to Alan Davis at the time and said, Alan, get this person in here. I wanna know everything we can learn about TIFF funds, the good, the bad, the ugly. I wanna know it all. So John Stump was the gentleman's name that came and presented towards us. And there's, there's really some good opportunities there, but I had requested that the Dupont property be left out of the TIFF. And the reason why was I didn't wanna lose those tax dollars. I mean, to be honest with you. So, because we knew that commercial growth was coming there. But then, you know, there, there are a lot of needs there. You know, the water district is coming out of the, their new plant. That they're taking from six million gallons a day to ten, and there's a forty-two inch water main coming out of there. There will be road improvements, hopefully that we can help with, with the TIFF funds. So anyway, I kinda gotta hit on myself a little bit. Let me back up. So when we saw that these requests for infrastructure improvements were coming. Especially with our, our north building, our public safety building, we felt that the best thing to do was go ahead and put the Dupont property back in to the TIFF. So we could collect those tax dollars and help pay for some of that infrastructure, including the public safety building.
Where, where do the TIFF funds come from?
Well, they come from within that district.
Property.
Yeah, they, they come off the tax, you know, like, let's just say currently, all that is probably to tax agricultural today. So now we're gonna put a commercial building on it. So now the difference between the agricultural and the commercial building, those funds will go into the TIFF.
Dramatic difference, by the way.
Yes, it's huge. So the state will make the school system whole. But th- those tax dollars actually go into the TIFF funds. And then the infrastructure, and, and that's what it's designed to do, is, is to support infrastructure in those districts. You know, if we already did not have an interchange there for the interstate, the TIP, the TIFF could pay for that. You know, so we, we needed a new public safety building, the Beddington Fire Station that was built in nineteen sixty-three. It's done its job, it's done its duty. They needed a new facility. So that's gonna end up, that's gonna end up being probably anywhere from thirteen to fifteen, eighteen million dollar project. The ambulance authority was looking at building a brand-new facility there two years ago, and we said, look, hang on. You know, we're, we're working on something that I think we can help you. So instead of having to raise those ambulance fees again to help pay for facilities, we're gonna be paying for it out of TIFF.
So CMC in the TIFF or out of the TIFF?
We're working on getting it back in. That was the public hearing that we had last week, or week, week four last.
Last week.
Last week.
Can you have impact fees in a TIFF district?
Two weeks ago, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
Okay. If you enact commercial impact fees, can you have commercial impact fees inside of a TIFF district?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Kearns?
I'm good.
All right, Mr. Bobwell?
Okay, I, I gotta say, I agree with the not charging at this point, especially if it's gonna be thirty, forty thousand dollars. On a ten thousand square foot commercial building, which would have dissuaded people. I'm gonna ask just a broad question, because now that we have impact fees, now that you guys have the ability to move them up, move them down. You know, based on, you know, what you feel is best. What else is there in the county that we really, really need, that we have not discussed, that may be able to come out of impact fees in the next few years?
I think, I think we've covered it. There's eight, there's three other categories we could've used other than the five we are.
Right, no, I, I mean, are there other projects, other things you see down the road that you see our county really needs to keep up? Because I, I moved here in ninety-six. I've been here twenty-nine years, half my, more than half my life. But we've done, we've gone from fifty thousand roughly to, we'll be at a hundred and fifty thousand by the time the next census. Are there other things that our county does not have that y'all feel like our county should have, but darn it, we just can't afford it yet?
Truthfully, I think we've hit most of it. I mean, we've, we've gotta spend twenty million dollars to improve the Judicial Center.
Right, I agree.
Now we have a way to pay for it. We've gotta buy more parkland to preserve for the future of our system and improve the existing parks that we have. We have to help our fire and rescue, which we're gonna be able to do now. So to me, this, this source of funding is touching on all the things that we need to make this a wonderful, continue to be a wonderful quality of life type.
So, I, I know we talked about it before, but kinda touched base on again how it did or would or could have affected the school board system as far as new schools.
Well, they, they can only build schools within the elementary age that qualified for the. Impact fee funds, okay? They qualify for seven thousand dollars. They certainly would like to have more. But at the same time, it's not a source of funding that's gonna be able to build an entire new school. They're still gonna have to pass bond levies to do that, okay? With the monies that we're providing, the thousand dollars a house, it, it, it'll only be maybe a million and a half or so a year. But it still could buy new buses because of the growth. It still could help pay for an addition to an existing school because of new growth and do some things there.
But you're passing those bond levies, which impact, as we talked a while ago about having to affect everyone. Those bond levies are gonna affect the people that are on those fixed incomes, that are the widower, widower, or.
Widower, widower, I'm gonna help you out, Bill.
Thank you. Those are the people that have a fixed income, and in, increasing the bond levy's gonna affect them adversely.
It is. And it, it's a fair argument, no question.
Has, has there been talk about giving more relief to older people? Because, I mean, what, what's happened in the last few years, as we all know here in the county.
It's more of a state legislative issue, though, that they don't really have a lot of control over.
Well, but we're trying.
But they're trying, but we're, we're, I mean, the house that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, two, three years ago. Is two twenty-five, two fifty now. So everyone's property taxes are rising precipitously, which will help us to provide more, more services here in the county, most definitely. But unfortunately, a lot of people's incomes have risen, but the seniors, which you were talking about before, the seniors' income has not. Has there been talk about anything else we can do just in general to give them relief?
Well, we, we did just a little bit on the ambulance fee two years ago, is that two years ago?
Twenty-five dollar.
Yeah, so if you were on home state exemption, or you're disabled, you qualify for a home state exemption. Then you also qualify for a twenty-five dollar reduction in your ambulance fee. So, and that was, that was because we increased the commercial fee, we started a commercial fee, which we had never had before. And they said it was difficult, and I said, I understand, but we're gonna do this, gotta figure it out, and they did. And, and Steve and I worked very closely with them because of some little hiccups here or there. But, but we were able to do that for the seniors on, on that particular fee. So, you know, we, we will continue to work and try to increase the home state exemption dollars for Berkeley County. And it, it make it permissive. That's what, you know, as talking with Commissioner Hardy, you know, he said, look. We don't wanna push our will on other counties. If the other counties don't wanna do it, that's fine. And I agree with that. But we need that here, we need that relief for our senior citizens here.
Senator Barrett is working, and of course, our, our lobbyist is working to, to increase it. It's twenty-five thousand dollars now. So in Berkeley County, if your house prices for three hundred thousand dollars, your assessed value is a hundred and eighty thousand, sixty percent. And then you get a twenty-five thousand dollars off the one eighty, so you pay taxes on a hundred and fifty-five. So we're trying to get that to a forty thousand dollar subtraction, so you go down to one forty, and then you pay, so that would save money on the tax base there. And we support that totally, that they do that. And so we're hoping to get that implemented here at the next session, so.
And that probably makes it easier to do, because so much of the new growth that we have are not older people. I mean, so much of the new growth that we have are, are people moving in, people where we're basically a bedroom community and they're commuting. So they will be paying the full, the full boat, which is good.
Yeah, and a lot of those folks have sold properties at much higher values in Northern Virginia area, coming here, most of them paying cash. And putting, you know, a, a good bit of money in the bank, and, and I'm happy for them. That's all, that's all fine and well. But, but we still need to, and we do, you know, cause Steve and I, and, and John, and, and HD, and Jim. We, we do have these discussions. We are concerned about the senior being forced out of their home. So the, the water rates just went up recently, so.
Insurance rates go up?
Sure, everything, everything goes up with the exception of their income, and we understand that and try to pay attention to that.
Yeah, we don't wanna lose sight of the people that have lived their whole lives within Berkeley County. To be able to satisfy and cater to the people that are moving into Berkeley County right now. We need to protect our, our lifelong residents.
We do, and they're the ones that have paved, paved the way and, and put us where we are today.
Absolutely.
Speaking of Parks and Rec, Steve, where's the County Commission with Joe Burton, the Parks and Rec Director's request for a levy? And in regards to a dedicated source of income for Parks and Rec. This is what Joe proposed as an answer, because I guess the other sources of income are kind of at the will of the commission. So, have at it with that.
The last three years legislatively, we have worked really hard to get the one percent sales tax passed. And it was, we were told three years ago, you're never gonna get it. Well, each year we get a little closer. This past session, the senate voted twenty-five to eight in favor of it. And the House never got it to a vote, but it went to the last day, and to the third reading. And they killed it with a bunch of amendments and things. But if we can get it through, then that's a source of revenue that we wanna pursue. Instead of raising the property taxes again, because an excess levy is gonna be in addition to a property tax. And that's what we don't wanna do. And if we could get the sales tax. And that thirty percent of the people traveling up and down eighty-one, the people that work here from out of county, help pay that, and the people that have money pay it. Then we can, keeps us from trying to raise the property taxes or enforce excess levies or ask the people to vote for that. And so there is no appetite until we get through this next legislative session to do it in May of next year. Now, would, if, if we get through the next legislative session and it doesn't pass the one percent sales tax. Would I be in favor of doing it on the November ballot? Possibly. You know, I, they do need funding, they need help. And we certainly don't wanna keep growing the park system like the new Inwood Park and not make sure they have the funding. But we'd rather fund them through different alternatives in an excess levy. And that's the consensus of the commission, I think, as a whole right now, and.
But if you had to look at your crystal ball and removing yourself from your lifelong dedication to the Parks and Rec, which I know would be difficult. But if you had to look at your crystal ball, you, you see that the impact fees have been implemented. You see that we have a not-too-old, um, new school bond. What do you think the appetite of the community would be if you put that on the ballot for earmarked for the Parks and Rec?
I think it would be a very, very difficult vote, because it not only requires a super majority, it requires sixty percent of the vote, so it's a super majority vote. And the last time we tried an excess levy for Parks and Rec was in nineteen ninety-eight. We did three of those in the nineties. And we proposed a new rec center in South Berkeley County before the Randy Smith Center was built. And we did things in North Berkeley, and we were gonna do this, and we got fifty-four percent of the vote. But we couldn't implement the tax because it needed super majority.
And just for, excuse me, John, just, just for a little bit of clarity with Steve. The one percent sales tax, we're, we're requesting for public safety funds. Which, once we can, if we can get it implemented, then we'll, that will fully fund our sheriff's office and fully fund our fire service. And I think also it will help with EMS and nine-one-one. So what that actually does is free up tax dollars to help with Parks and Rec. The, it, the one cent sales tax does not go to the parks, the one cent would go to public safety. But it frees up additional monies that we already currently have, or we're currently work off of for Parks and Rec.
We think we've said this publicly, if we got the sales tax through, we think we could eliminate the rain tax, the much-hated rain tax, you know? Even though it's forty-two dollars a year, it's the most controversial tax that's in Berkeley County. And you hear about it every day.
Well, the way it's raining this year, that's kind of a value, that we're only paying forty-two bucks for rain tax. We've got, we've got more than our forty-two dollars.
I just got my, my property tax bill in Frederick County, Maryland, and the rain tax in there is one penny. I don't know how they got away with it, but they.
Well, they're absorbing in their tax dollars, that's what they're doing. They're absorbing, and that's what we want to be able to do.
You're paying a lot more taxes there than you would if you lived in that same home here in Berkeley County.
Little bit.
Over there in the People's Republic of Maryland.
But if we can get our, if we can get ourselves positioned, that's, that's one of the fees that we want to absorb within that.
And maybe eventually even absorb some other fees, or, or if not absorb them, keep them from increasing. That would be important, too.
Gentlemen, good, good talk.
Thank you.
It's over already?
As they say, yeah, your full hour is up, man.
I got more.
You're free to move about the cabin now. Take off your seatbelts, roam around some, yeah.
Thank you.
Eddie Gokenhour, Steve Catlett, thank you.
Thanks for having us.